It's time I would like to call the Harden County Board of Education meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. And if you don't mind, we'll stand and say a pledge to the flag.
You want to ask the Creekside Elementary students?
Yeah, it's Creekside Elementary students here. Won't you come up here and lead us in the pledge, okay? Come right up here in the front and we'll let you all lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And board commitments. John, you got the board commitments up there?
To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And student and staff recognitions will be by Mr. John Wright.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our HCS Stronger Together Awards that we'll be giving out to those who earned those awards this evening. And so if you'll pass that resolution, Mr. Chairman, we'll get started.
Okay, do you have your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a resolution. All in favor, second thought saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clayton Hawkman, I think I saw you here. Come on up, Clayton. This young man, his ask off work to be here tonight, so that's truly, he's truly dedicated. But Clayton is a, Mr. Johnson will be giving you, give an award here, Clayton. But Clayton is a Central Harden High School senior. He serves as the Bruin JROTC Battalion Commander and recently received a coveted four-year full Army JROTC, or Army ROTC scholarship to attend Western Kentucky University. He plans to commission as an Army officer and then serve our nation. Clayton holds a 3.9 GPA. He attends and is involved with White Mills Christian Church and Camp, and he has, he and his family prepare the fish fry at the White Mills Day each year. He was selected the first team all district in football and qualified for the state wrestling tournament while serving as a captain for both teams.
Wow.
He also competed on the archery and rifle teams. Clayton served as captain of both the National Male Raider Team and the undefeated drill team that won the 7th Brigade's Sergeant Major Paul Gray Drill Championship this year. He commanded the color guards at both Cecilia Days and White Mills, as well as home basketball games and the school's Veteran Day service. Clayton, thank you, we appreciate you. Mom and dad, stand up, you all did, you all deserve an award too. Thank you, and thank you for your future service to our country, Clayton. We appreciate you.
Wonderful.
Kurt Dobbs, David Winchester, Becky Dennis, come on up. And when they walked in, they said, "I think we've been bamboozled." You have. Come on up. So Kurt, David, and Becky teach and work each day at Creekside Elementary School. Principal Brooke Custis has shared that the school's AgStream program, which you'll hear more about here shortly, is tremendously, tremendously successful because of the hard work of Mr. Dobbs, Mr. Winchester, and Ms. Dennis, and the work that they dedicate to it. They check on animals during weekends and on school breaks, they research trail maintenance, they seek community partners and resources to help students, they tend, help tend crops and maintain beds during school breaks, and they paint murals in their free time and often donate the materials. We appreciate you guys tremendously. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Her name is Brooke Custis, she did that. Next, we'd like to bring up Dennis Parrott. Come on up, Dennis. Come on up. As you, I think everybody here knows Dennis, Dennis Parrott represents Harden County in the Kentucky State Senate, and he is our Stronger Together Community Award Member tonight. He is retiring from the Senate this year after 12 years of service and has his party's caucus whip. Senator Parrott is a known proponent of nonpartisan redistricting and financial literacy. He worked hard for legislation to make financial literacy standards a part of our curriculum. He was a major advocate for the Kentucky Senate Sunny Page Program, which is a bipartisan campaign that he and Senator Carroll initiated during the 2017 General Assembly to raise awareness and encourage children with disabilities to participate in a legislative process while serving as Senate pages. He also worked hard in his time in Frankfurt to ensure students with modified curriculums graduate with a diploma instead of a certificate of completion. Senator Parrott filed and passed numerous bills that became law during his time in the Kentucky General Assembly. Most notable of those was a bill that would strengthen DUI laws in Kentucky and a bill to include nonprofit organizations in the Boots to Business Program. Dennis Parrott has always been a good friend of Harden County Schools, well before his time in Frankfurt started. He's a West Harden High School graduate, a member of our distinguished alumni, and has always advocated for agriculture education programs. Public education has been a priority for Senator Parrott, and his voting record in Frankfurt indicates that. He's, has always sought feedback from HCS staff and administration regarding education legislation and its possible effect on students. We applaud Senator Parrott for 12 years of dedicated service in Frankfurt, and we thank him for his lifetime of advocacy for the students and the staff of Harden County Schools. We appreciate you.
Well, I do have to say, John, when you are voting on aye, I almost had aye with you. Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis. Senator Parrott's a great friend, and all three of these, all three, four, five of these folks are certainly deserving this award, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We need a moment of silence for Kaylee Hawke. She was a Woodland Elementary student that passed away. 5th grade student, we were down there at Woodland today. They've got a display in the lobby, wonderful display. She was very actively involved, so just a moment of silence for her. Thank you. Really appreciate it. And that brings us down to focus on academics, and Mr. Greg Sutton will take care of that for us.
Yes, Chairman, whilst we have two presentations. Not usually we do it to one, but we have so many good things going on, we didn't want to skip one of them. So we're gonna start with our AgStream program. We've got a little one-minute video we want to show before we call them up here to kind of give you an idea of what they're doing.
Good morning, class. We're here today for your AgStream session, and what we want to focus on today is we want to take from the tree an apple, and we want to turn the apples that we gather into applesauce. So we kind of got it from the farm to the table, but we're gonna go through the process of peeling it. All right, good job. Next. All right, next. You can pick out an apple.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, group one. All right, everybody's had a chance to taste, right?
Uh-huh.
That's better than you buy at the store right there, I'm telling you. But, you know, she takes the kids to a lot of experiences like that, hands-on, engaging. I don't want to steal our thunder tonight, but I want to bring Ms. Becky Dennis, one of our great outstanding teachers down at Creekside, up here today, and bring some of her kids up here, let them show some of the great things they're doing with our AgStream program. Really appreciate what they're doing. Come on down, Ms. Dennis. Appreciate you. Come on down, give a big round of applause.
All right, come on, guys. They're quieter now than they were this morning. Some of you may not know that I was going to retire September 1st last year, turned 55 in August, and kind of got this rumor that this was open thing, and this is something I have always wanted to do. I love this program. It kept me there, and I really thank Brooke for the opportunity to do that. But our program is so energized. Our kids are learning so much, and they're excited about what they're learning, and it's just really an awesome thing to see. If you'll just scroll through, the AgStream stands for Agriculture, Science, Technology, Reading, sorry, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. And I try to incorporate, incorporate a lot of these things into what I teach. We just said that for honoring the past and preparing our students for the future, that agribusiness is a big business, especially in Southern Harden County, and we have so many Creekside families that contribute to our program and help us carry on. Here's just a few of, well, I think I have everybody, community partnerships that we formed this year. Our philosophy, students learn best by doing. By offering students hands-on, real-world applications of course subjects, students will gain the technology and innovation skills to prepare them for the future. On the right-hand side are some of the curriculum I've been using. This is just a quote that we found, "Agriculture is not crop production as popular belief holds. It's the production of food and fiber from the world's land and waters. Without agriculture, it is not possible to have a city, stock market, banks, university, church, or army. Agriculture is the foundation of civilization and any stable economy." Here are some goals we have for our children, excuse me. By focusing and centering everything, we do around real world, I can't speak tonight, real-world applications. Students won't just be learning facts, they'll be living it, and I think that's a big thing. And we hope that every student in Southern Harden County has this opportunity. AgStream has been really good for our school. Okay, so here we go. We started, I jumped right in with some fall planting, so I partnered with some community support here from Sonora Farm Center and from Jordan's Greenhouses, and we got started. This is our display cases when you first come in. We wanted to go with the agriculture theme. David is very responsible for that.
Whose jacket is that?
Central, I think it's Bo Langley's. This one's probably David's, because he's a North Harden alum. So we jumped in there, got some raised beds planted. The kids, I tried to involve them in everything we're doing with the planting and harvesting, teaching them how to harvest. And I'm gonna see if any of them want to pipe in on this one. The applesauce was a lot of fun. We did do curriculum things with it. Also, I incorporated reading with applesauce day, but we want to bring in that from our farm to our table emphasis in everything. Okay, I'm gonna be quiet on this one. Who's gonna talk?
Pumpkins. Up there, we have the life cycle of pumpkins. So at first, it goes from seed to sprout, and y'all get the jig. We also not just played with pumpkins, we read about them, and it was a really fun experience and like playing with the pumpkins. She had us measure stuff, and we weighed them, and we put them in the water, and I think it was cool to just learn about pumpkins around Halloween time.
It was a great experience.
Did they pump it back?
We did. We did. I'm all about food. This slide, I enjoyed this so much, watching the kids try things. I also had some parents tell me that they would try it for me before they'd try it for them. So I did have enough lettuce planted and cauliflower and broccoli that every student tried it, their taste testing. Some of them discovered they really liked it. Oh, here's our Ag Day. Anybody want to say anything about Ag Day? Was a huge success, I think. Do y'all have any favorite parts of Ag Day?
I like the petting zoo.
Ah, the petting zoo was, petting zoo was a big favorite. But we had, I think, 20-some people set up from different agencies, and the kids rotated to different classes throughout the day, and I think a fun time was had by all. That's just some more of our Ag Day. We had some large equipment there, you can see the petting zoo. We've also incorporated our FFA chapters. This was with Central Harden. Central Harden came, they come once a month, and in part of this, they're reading a story. It's called "The Tales of a Dairy Godmother," and we went through some activities with that and ended up making ice cream, which you can see that all enjoyed. They were just with us yesterday, and yesterday they played some games with us, ag-related games, and it was really fun, the outcome. These kids are just phenomenal. They've jumped in the air, they've had some heartache this year, but they jumped in the air and pushed on. Anybody want to talk about our other friends from John Harden? Come on. 4th and 5th grade. 4th and 5th grade arranged a field trip to John Harden. I had talked to Mr. Jeremy several times, and I wanted to go see what he was doing, because we'd gotten our hydroponic tower, and I wanted to see what they were doing. So we went. Tell them what you liked about going.
I liked seeing how they were cleaning the flowers and the shoeboxes.
Yeah, that was kind of...
I like how they used different lights and sources to grow the plants.
Yeah, because they found that some lights, like they could use pink lights or blue lights, and it would increase production. So those generated a lot of ideas for us. And then we ended the day at Highland Sod Farm.
I enjoyed seeing all the big machines, because I had learned some stuff about the seed and what the machines did. And even though I live on a farm, I didn't know this, because I don't live on a sod farm. I live on a beef farm, so I didn't know all the mechanical machines, so I got to go home and tell my dad all that I learned.
You didn't talk him into it, did you?
No.
And they had the fish delivered at John Harden when you all went to...
No, they didn't. I saw it, but they posted it on the Facebook page.
So y'all might have to go back for a visit.
We might have to go back. Like I said, I tried to incorporate some art into each one. Kindergarten did the pigs. Kemp, don't you have something you want to ask?
No.
Oh, come on, you said you were gonna tell them a joke.
What's a pig's hair or hairy?
What?
Chicken.
Well, for that one, didn't you?
But I tried to do, like with kindergarten, we did the shapes with the show pig, and then 1st grade wrote some poems, 2nd grade wrote some little songs with it, so, but I tried to do something with that. On the right, the 4th and 5th grade did watercolors with the sunflowers, and then, I'm not sure where the other one came from, but we all entered a pollinator contest from the Kentucky Beekeepers Association. We got a couple honorable mentions. That was good. Here's what's currently in my classroom. We got a grow tower. It is through a grant that we got from Farm Bureau and White Reinhardt, and you can kind of see the little green pictures, my sprouts just starting. I'm gonna have to replace some. Some of those plants have been in there since January 17th, so I'm trying to replace the crop, and then you can see the close-up of the lettuce that we're getting. And then on the little mini greenhouse, Jones Supply in Upton donated that, and I've got some pretty good products right there. We've got some squash, peppers, and tomatoes coming up to plant in our garden.
I wanted to talk about the AgStream art.
Okay, go ahead.
So AgStream art was a great creativity, and we got to learn about, a lot about flowers and different types of animals while painting and coloring these things.
And as I remember, you're quite the artist, so she enjoys that part a lot. These are some future plans we have for our learning trail. We got a grant from Noland RACC and formed a trail going around the back of our property, and those are some things that we're gonna be incorporating into the trail. The beehives are ready to go. We're just, the Harden County Beekeepers Association's gonna supply the bees, and then they will do maintenance on the hives, which pleased me. There's a picture of our hive with all the flowers on it. Oh, and this, everybody's favorite part. Anybody want to talk about that?
I was wondering...
Go ahead, what?
I like, because I've never seen the life cycle of a chicken, so I got to learn all about that.
Mm-hmm, and we even got to do what?
I got to learn about the incubator and how, and how it moved the eggs side to side and how it kept the horn.
I liked seeing the life, the life cycle of a chick, from the egg to the chicken, and then you only had to wait 21 days until they were born, and...
It seemed like a long 21 days, though.
I liked seeing, I liked seeing, I like, I liked when Ms. Dennis candled the chickens, because we got to see whether there was a chicken side or there was no chicken side. And we saw a little black dot. And we also watched a video, Magic School Bus, about the life cycle of the chicken.
You're not gonna go there.
And we, we learned the cycle of the chickens, and they went inside of a chicken and kind of showed us how the egg formed and then...
I knew you were gonna do it. That was very entertaining, but we have enjoyed it, haven't we, guys?
We did candling.
Oh, yeah, the candling was neat. You're welcome. Thank you, guys, for letting us present our program.
Thank you.
That's great. All the vocabulary they were talking about, the processes, some of the best learning happens not inside that classroom, but outside sometimes with our, with our hands, and thank you. So our 8th grade career fair, we're gonna show that real quick, it's a one-minute video. On March 30th, we had our 8th grade career fair down at Pritchard Community Center, had 30, 30 partners, community partners there. I'm gonna let Ms. Slaven talk about that, but a one-minute video just to give you a chance to see a little bit of it, if you didn't get a chance to make it that day.
Are you starting out with bits and you've got like...
Yeah, all right.
Where it runs through our filter is what we're doing.
And it's, this is Adobe Premiere Pro, so then...
So, what was the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife or Conservation Office for the state of Kentucky?
What we've been trying to work on is getting our students better educated with what they're doing in the classroom and how, if they're excited about it, they enjoy it, and they're good at it, it can turn into money-making opportunity for them and future careers. So seeing all that's happening in the ag program down at the elementary level makes my heart so happy, because it also goes that other step, which is community partnerships. We really want our students to not only make connections between their classroom and careers, but their classroom and careers here in Harden County. So a big part of that, we started a middle school career exploration course last year, and we have asked our teachers, of course, last year being kind of COVID-y, we asked our teachers to bring in community business partners so that the students could start to learn where here locally they could do those jobs that they were learning about in the classroom. So this year, we decided to take it one step further, and we did what we called our middle school career demonstration fair. And so every business that showed up, we had over 30 businesses show up, brought in hands-on items, something the students could see, touch, or do, so that they could experience what it was like in that career field and also hear about jobs in that career field. A big part of it is just exposing them to the variety of careers that exist, because there are so many out there. A lot of them just don't know all the different job titles. So we kind of prepped our community members about that. We said, you know, keep it very career-focused and talk to them about various different jobs that fall within your company, you know, while they're seeing and doing. And we really appreciated our businesses. They showed up. So you saw the robot that Altech brought, but they also had a virtual welder onsite that a lot of the kids enjoyed playing with. Heartland Communications had a big old green screen and let the kids record commercials, and they talked to them about the editing process and the marketing process. Harden County Water District Number 2 has been amazing. They've allowed us to come in and do field trips, and every time we've asked them to come out and do different things, they showed up. They had our students drinking water all day, which was hilarious. They told them it was voted the best tasting water, and so our kids were voluntarily just drinking water the entire day. They thought it was the greatest thing. We had Will Harris Home show up, and they were showing them how to do building and different engineering things. So it was really exciting to see the community partners come out, but the best thing that we got out of it was this, the business partners told us, students were asking great questions. And so that shows us that there's a deep interest in there, and a lot of our career exploration teachers actually came to the fair with their students, and so when they took them back to the school, it was really great for them to get to ask them, like, what did you see? What did you want to learn more about? And it can influence our curriculum in the future. But it definitely ties into our larger goals that Superintendent Morgan has, for us to create in-depth business partnerships. We've been really pushing co-op, and we want students to get work-based learning experience, but we want it to be more than that. We don't want to just go to a business and say, "Hey, will you take our students and have them work their senior year?" We want them embedded throughout our schools and incorporated in the educational process so that the curriculum that we're teaching actually is preparing students for the future workforce. And so this is just one part of them getting in at the younger grades. The ag program you just saw is another example of community partners getting in at the younger grades, and then as we continue forward with our project and problem-based learning initiatives that we have, we're gonna bring in even more community partners. And so they'll be involved with the students, the curriculum, and then they'll naturally want to pull them into the workplace, because they've seen them and they know what they're capable of doing. So we're trying to create a comprehensive educational program that really prepares students for the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very good. You know, it's this time of the year when things really start looking good. Our programs are showing success, and it's, it's the end of the school year, and we're having graduations, we're seeing what students have achieved, and they're starting at a very young age, and they're gonna be at the top of the list. We're gonna have future Harden County workers, leaders in these groups. We really appreciate it.
We're doing more for, for our students than I feel like any district in the state of Kentucky.
Absolutely.
Proud of it. Right. Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm glad we got to showcase that, and I appreciate you letting me do two tonight. I do, and I know we're gonna do one, but I didn't want to leave out that middle school career fair. That was on March 30th. I know the AgStream's been a whole year process, but you see things start to tie in. We're connecting the dots now, and we're getting where we want to go.
If you don't mind, Mr. Sutton, do you mind to talk about the work ethic certifications at the different grade levels that we're doing beyond just our seniors in the, at high school?
Yes, we've actually moved the work ethic interview process down to our elementary schools and middle schools. So central office staff, admin leadership teams, community members will be in every elementary school, middle school, and high school over the next month, integrating every 5th grader, 8th grader, and 12th grader, to give them those interview skills, those soft skills, how to look somebody in the eye, shake somebody's hand, ask, answer questions. A good example of that was yesterday at the STLP conference in Lexington. I was up there, watching six of our groups present, and those kids had to shake our hand, look us in the eye, tell us about their project, and those are soft skills that our students are gonna need when they go out in the workforce. These are skills and vocabulary and the hands-on experience they're gonna need to go out and, and keep our, you know, keep our world moving. So that's, it's important, but the work ethic certification is, is big for us, and I'm glad we finally, this year, were able to move it to every level. So if you get a chance to be involved in that, somebody invites you to school, we'd love for you to come by and interview some of those elementary kids, middle school or high school kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Appreciate you, Greg.
All right. We have recognition of visitors, and we try to allocate about three minutes or so for each one that signs up to speak with us. And tonight, we have John Charney, and is he here?
All right, I'm here, sir.
Okay. Would you go to the podium there? Just give me a second, please. It was a little short handout. Thanks for coming, Dennis.
Thank you.
Are you Ms. Morgan?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You scared me so much. I'm John Charney calling.
It was a good phone call.
It was a great phone call, but I've never heard a phone call from a superintendent in a minute. I don't know.
All right, good evening. I'll try to make this quick and to the point. I'll get into that in a minute, but the point of that handout is the second message, the bottom one, if you will. So I wrote a letter to Mr. Sutton a while back, and thank you for not only hearing me out, but actually going down to the school to observe my son. I really do appreciate that. But to give everybody else... But to give everybody else, uh, some context to what, um, the letter involved. It was basically about how the pandemic is affecting our children. Uh, currently it's estimated, I think by Newsweek, don't quote me on that, but approximately $1 trillion in lost earnings for our kids that were affected. To put that in context, there's about 350 million Americans right now. If you were to divide that trillion into that 350 million, that's every man, woman, and child, infant, elderly, no longer working. Um, it comes out to close to $3,000, 200, uh, $2,857 if you specific. But again, that's not all of America. It's just literally the children we're talking about that were affected by the pandemic. Um, I want to discuss my kids. I got three kids, uh, all of them play soccer in the Elizabeth Town, uh, Youth Soccer Association. All of them go to Radcliffe Elementary. Uh, my daughter fell last year. I was here before and I spoke to you about that when I was bringing up my son. Um, we didn't find out that she was failing until the end of the year. Surprise, right? Um, uh, found out in November, my, my, my youngest son Xavier was not meeting first grade level around November. But they're great kids. They all play soccer. I even coached my, my son's soccer league. They got a great mother and I have a beautiful wife. They're the same person. Um, who's currently still serving in the military. She deployed because of the, uh, Ukrainian Russia situation right now. So she's been in Europe since February. But she's a dedicated mother as well. Um, for myself, uh, I served, uh, about twenty and a half years in the army. I served enlisted as an officer and as an officer. Uh, what I did as an officer though was basically, and this is goes for any officer in the military. Um, one of their main jobs, you know, you got the whole leading the troops, planning the mission, all this good stuff. But what they do is they research data, interpret data, come up with trends. They also develop next courses of actions. A lot of what the school does, um, a lot of the time. Uh, civilian job, um, I, uh, worked as a supervisor at a technology company. Um, I spoke on that last time I was here. We study trends, time management. You know, if you move this piece here, it speeds up this much, saves this much in money, um, and so forth. Uh, I won't go too far in depth with that. I graduated with a bachelor's degrees in organizational leadership and learning, uh, track and workfa- workplace, uh, performance with honors. Um, I've taken numerous master level course classes in statistics, business analytics. Analytics, for anybody that doesn't know, it's just the study of data. That's all it is. And other classes that make you collect, shift through, and analyze data. Uh, I'm expected to graduate from, uh, an MBA program, uh, here in August, uh, with certification from the school in business analytics. So why is that important? The reason why I'm saying all that is because I understand the importance of data. I understand the importance of collection and making a responsible decision. I understand. I came here to discuss my son's progress with the lack thereof at Radcliffe Elementary. Before I start, I want to make perfectly clear as to what my point is. Radcliffe Elementary, either through policy, dereliction, or on purpose, is not doing their job in regard to ensuring my son is getting the help he needs. I am not saying that my son is the only one who's being affected, but because I'm sure there's others. I didn't have to, I went to my neighbor who's here tonight, um, and his child has also been affected. I received a call from a superintendent, uh, Ms. Morgan, um, who, I know you guys are trying to do, you guys are doing good things. You're not trying, you are. Um, she, I believe she compiled some data. I don't know if it was Radcliffe School-specific or Hardin County-specific or statewide. I'm not for sure. But I know some data was collected, uh, to point out a need. That aligned with the letter that I wrote with all those charts and stuff, um, was submitted to you guys and you guys actually approved for a, a certified teacher to go to Radcliffe, uh, to help specifically with struggling students. So thank you. I know you guys are, are, are trying to do well. So what, so what we have done as parents, um, we originally enrolled our son and his sister in 21st Century After School Program. At the, uh, after the school program ended, either my wife or I would study with our children daily. Uh, for Xavier, we would do the normal homework as well as printing off worksheets from various educational websites. Excuse me, most of which are free. The hours my son spent conducting educational tasks each day were numerous. After receiving, um, it was so numerous, we actually disenrolled him for the 21st Century Program so that he could concentrate more specifically on just, um, the reading and the math, uh, the school-specific things. After receiving Xavier's first progress report, we set up a meeting with both the principal and his teacher, which was conducted in early November. My wife had a meeting on her about the 26th of the November with just this teacher, I believe, it might, it might have been a person, but I think it was over the phone. Since then, we've had numerous telephone calls with the principal and with Xavier's teacher. And this is not talking, this is not even considering the dojo messages that go back and forth. Or the fact that, you know, I was able to sit down with the accountant to go over the books and that kind of prefaced the, the, the letter, if you will. I had a phone meeting with, uh, I already spoke about Mr. Sutton, uh, and thanked him for his help earlier. Um, so basically a letter came, a survey came home, uh, to survey, uh, some Title I standards, like, were you informed? Did you know about this? I, I don't remember specifics. But there was a comment underneath there. So I wrote in, um, in writing on the survey that basically I'm tired of my son being watched to fail. Like, we watch him fail, we record him failing, then we watch some more. And then that cycle just goes on and on. But I'm gonna prove to you the points that I'm trying to make and, and how that, this has been occurring. Um, so the, the phone call happened around 12:54 with the principal, um, on 15th April, uh, last Friday. The conversation was originally based off of, um, uh, of, started because, uh, was based, she was calling me because of academic and cognitive evaluation consent meeting, which is tomorrow. Um, that's basically, uh, as you guys know, is to check for learning disabilities. It's scheduled for tomorrow, but tomorrow we also have the ref- uh, retention prevention meeting as well. And I made it clear to Ms., uh, I'm trying not to use her name, but I made it clear to the principal, uh, that's fine. I don't mind doing both meetings. She was actually trying to make it more convenient for me. And I said, as long as it doesn't interfere with the retention prevention meeting. She said, it won't. It's, it's just a consent. You already know what's going on, so it should go pretty smoothly. So I said, okay. Lo and behold, today I get a text from the, uh, teacher. Hey, so since we're doing that consent meeting, I'm paraphrasing here, we're gonna, tomorrow we'll reschedule the retention prevention meeting. The one meeting that is gonna tell me if my son is on a path to get out of this first grade or if he's gonna repeat, the one that I said was important, I'm now being told that that's gonna get pushed away so that we can do this consent meeting. The conversation soon changed though, because I was trying to make, um, well, one, okay, there we go. I had asked, uh, the principal if I could get a list of things that the school has done to help my so- son outside of the normal stuff that students get anyways. I was gonna say, as you guys probably already know, all students, to my knowledge, receive small group leadership or small group, uh, instruction throughout the day. Uh, from my understanding, it's reading and math. So they basically divide up the class and put them in groups. Every student gets that. She stated that she would provide me with copies of Xavier's, uh, and I could have this report wrong, but I believe it was the monthly retention progress report, but it was some report that the school, school does every month. I then explained to her that I was worried that I was gonna get a list of essentially nonsense. Again, I asked for specific things that had taken place to help my son improve, um, that other students were not getting. She, she began to read an occurrence, um, with whatever she had in front of her, um, from November stating that the ES teacher, I forget her name, had sat one-on-one with Xavier for 10 minutes. And I think it was, it was either reading or math. It might have been both. She also stated, uh, she also listed it on whatever she was reading, there was small group instruction, which she quickly acknowledged that all the kids were receiving. She also told me that the ES teacher had retired, I think at the end of September, beginning of December. She then jumped to February 2022. So now we're in November. We skip December, and I understand there's a, a winter break at the end. But we skip December, skip all of January. The kids return to school around the third or fourth, but we just left that out. Anyways, uh, she told me that Xavier started KSI in February 10th. Then proceeded to tell me that he was moved into Tier Two in some areas and a Tier Three in another. Going to be honest with you, I never asked this question to the principal, but I would love to know what changed with the help that Xavier was getting when he was moved from Tier Two to Tier Three? What, what, what diff- what was done different? Or did we just literally just move his name from one label and put him other, another one? And some kind of record-keeping online, whatever the case may be? Uh, I asked the principal, um, basically I asked her, I was like, we submitted, um, we had a meeting in November when we had that progress report, beginning, early November. I asked for additional help. She brought up, um, again, understanding, I understand data. She used terms like triangulation of data. You need basically three data points to basically see a trend or determine, um, the correct path forward. Alright, or things that sustain. So right off the bat, we have, let's look at the data points that we have in front of us. We have his progress report, which I know on grade level one, you don't have Fs. You have, uh, N, N, M, I think, but we'll just call it Fs for the sake of arguments. He's failing in everything, to include turning in homework. I literally had to ask the principal to ask the teacher to please collect homework up from a six-year-old. And my son wasn't the only one. There were seven in there. You know why it wasn't being collected? Because those six-year-olds should have had the responsibility to get up on their own and turn in their homework every day. And as the teacher, as the teacher, if they're not doing it, well, hey, I told them. I have supervised hundreds of grown men and women in lethal situations. And I've, I've had to remind them of things if they're not doing it. But we're gonna take a six-year-old and if he doesn't listen to it after it's been put out, then well, he's gonna fail. But that was fixed. But anyways, we were given instructions in that early November meeting of what we needed to turn in, which we ended up turning in. Going back to the data points, so we had the, the progress report. We had, uh, we turned in a letter, a diagnosis from a counselor, uh, at the end of November in regards to, um, him possibly having H, uh, what was it? HDH, eight, yeah. And then, um, I think the, you had test scores that had came out as well. And then, so that's three data points. And then you have their parents with their concerns. I don't know if that would be considered a data point, but I would take it on. But anyways, um, so we turned all this into November. So I'd just like you to, that, that thing I gave you, you'll notice it's dated February 1st. So again, discussed, we were told what to do. Explained to us what was going to happen. Parent, do this, turn in this, we will do this. We did that. February 1st, we did that in November. February 1st is when we find out that he's not enrolled in this KSI stuff. Okay? We had to get an updated form signed by his counselor. We sent all three of our kids to counseling as well, alright? Had to get an updated form, um, signed by the counselor and then we, my wife went in, um, I think February 10th or 12th, don't quote me on it, but around that date, and she signed additional, uh, 504 paperwork. I brought this up to the principal during our conversation. She acknowledged that her team could have done better. But as a parent, if I didn't get feedback, I should have called the school. And I said, you know what? I'll concede that point, but I want to go over the scenario again. We had a meeting. You gave us instructions what to do. We followed your instructions. The expectation was it was going to happen. I, I'm gonna be honest with you. I had no idea that I, I should have expected a call from the school saying, we, we actually did what we talked, what we said we were gonna do in the last meeting. I had no idea. Um, and I told her, from now on, I will call up the school. If there's any action the school tells me and I don't get direct feedback from now on that it's occurring, I'll call the school myself and follow up. I'll do that on everything. Then we started talking about, um, again, um, we, we brought that up and then I brought back again, why did we skip, um, uh, December and January? We went back and forth on a lot of things. Um, it was a very, you can tell we were both being confrontational, but it was respectful. Um, I informed her that I didn't trust the school in any way at all at this point. Um, you know, my son is gonna, I'm gonna sign this consent form because my sister, she's also a certified counselor. Um, she explained to me about this test. But I, I, I'm really, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm, I, I understand that this, the, the counselor that's gonna conduct this test works for the district and not the school. But I'm very concerned about it because we got all these things that are, are, are being said happen. I'm showing these graphs. I'm showing these charts going from Tier Two to Tier One. Here's a KSI, we're putting them KSI. And then I asked the question, what are you actually doing? Can you tell me what you're doing? We did one 10-minute meeting or one 10-minute one-on-one with an ES teacher who no longer works at the school in November. Ma'am, did that occur once a day, once a week, once a month? Well, I don't have that information in front of me. Hopefully his teacher recorded it. So it's not recorded, so if it pops up at some kind of school spreadsheet or something, I was told it wasn't in there. That it was on the teacher. She should have recorded it. So basically takeaways I had from this conversation. I still have no idea what the school has done outside of that 10-minute one-on-one meeting. So I'm asking the board, could you please tell me? Please don't show me a chart. Don't name a program. Can you just tell me what was actually done? Example, he received one one-on-one tutelage from an ES certified teacher sometime in November. That is something. Showing me a chart again is collection, recording, and displaying of data. That doesn't, that's nothing, that, that's not directly, that's not helping my son. Like, what has been done? The school in every interaction uses words like analyze, access progress. In other words, like I said, triangulation of data, but never exactly says what they're doing. As far as I know, there is zero proof of anything that has occurred outside of that 10-minute one-on-one with ESS. KSI started in February and Xavier has been moved in some system or on some paperwork to, to Tier Two or Tier Three. Again, what happened in December and January? Anything? Oh yes, as far as KSI paperwork not being taught, I already spoke about that. Um, I also have an email, um, we did get the update on my, our counselor signing on February 2nd. That was requested on February 1st. So as parents, we're notified on February 1st. The next day, he was in the counselor's office getting evaluator, getting that paperwork filled out, whatever was needed and requested. The very next day. We didn't wait a week. We didn't wait two weeks, three weeks. We did not wait two months. We did it the very next day and then when we called up to the school, we turned it in and signed the other paperwork. Went over the charts. I have a few ask, I have a few ask requests. That if not answered by the school board directly, result in me coming to the school board meeting every single time it occurs. I understand you guys have a, a midday meeting as well. To recap this entire experience, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to threaten you. I think you guys are great people. I'm looking to hold somebody accountable or at least to make progress with my son. I'm great at marketing, alright? I have $650. I can target something like 600, 700 households here, um, through an online website. And I can explain my story and have it delivered in the mail to them. My, my ask is simple. Can somebody please tell me specifically what help my son has received outside of the normal help that every child receives? Again, I'm asking you, please don't come with a chart that says this is his progress and then not tell me what has been done. Because I, it seems like all this time, since we've been getting engaged in the school, look at all this stuff, but don't look behind the curtain. What actions are gonna be taking to make this right? I'm sure you're going to say that you'll look into it, which you should. But what things are gonna be done? Will my son get the opportunity to attend summer school to possibly be able to, uh, get past the first grade? Every time I've asked the teacher, do you think he's gonna get out, he's gonna move on to the second grade? Do you think he's gonna graduate first grade? They always tell me the same lie. We cannot tell you that he's definitely gonna fail. Oh, come on. Just let me know. What, what am I to expect? Well, right now, how it looks, he's probably not gonna pass the first grade. And I also shared that with the principal. Will my son get a, a opportunity to go to summer school, hopefully pass, uh, the second grade? Um, is somebody gonna be held accountable? Is somebody gonna be fired? Is somebody gonna be censored? Is somebody gonna be... Is somebody gonna be censored? Is somebody gonna be, whatever disciplinary actions you guys have? Is anything gonna happen? Will you change the process of identifying children who need help? So after talking with the principal, there, I guess there's a set of guidelines going back to this triangulation of data. Alright, um, they have to have three data points again to, to see a trend and, and to figure out basically the next step forward. That process is slow. It's slow. It's not working. Alright, if that process is the resp- is responsible for the lack of help my son has been given, um, it needs to get changed. Cause again, I'm one parent. I don't know how many parents, how many other kids are feeling this. Um, but I don't think he's the only one. Um, case in point, I believe you guys are hiring this other certified teacher for Reichliffe Elementary only because even you see that there's an issue. But the process of getting these kids into these programs needs to be sooner rather than later. And it could literally be a teacher, one of the most important people in our children's lives to say, hey, it's week three. I think he needs additional help. I don't have those data points. I know when I try to get him to read the word cat, he still can't do it and it's been three weeks. Um, oh, during our last conversation, um, the principal stated to me that she would check her schedule and set up a meeting to discuss what has been done for Xavier. She had to check her schedule. She ended the meeting, by the way, because we were just going around in circles. Alright, because I kept asking for stuff and I couldn't get answers to specific things, what actually has been happening. Uh, but she said she would check her schedule, but going off of what she had instructed me to do last time. I'll, I'll, when I go to the meeting tomorrow, I'll bring it up, but I'm letting you guys know. It's been a week now. She told me she would call me back to set up a meeting to discuss what exactly has happened, what has been dealt with my son. It's been a week. I have not received a phone call. An action was promised, an action has not occurred. I'll bring it up tomorrow, but I'm just letting you know. And then again, if nothing happens at the next school board meeting, I'll bring up all the promised actions that were occurred that were never actually actioned on. Um.
Uh, we're running out of time here, sir. We've, we've allowed you, uh, twenty-some minutes here of a three to five minute time. I understand what you're saying. I think you've been around a couple, three different times on the same thing. So, uh, we really need to move on, but we will look into what's going on. And I know you said you didn't wanna hear that, but that's what
No, no, I, I expected, sir. But, and, and I'll, I'll get off the, the, the soapbox. Who is gonna call me to tell me what is going on, what has happened to my son? It, it was very simple. What has been done to help my son? That's all I'm asking for. Who is gonna call me?
I believe you have a meeting at the school tomorrow with Mr. Sutton.
Yep, I know he's invited.
I've spoken to him multiple times. So if after tomorrow's meeting, Mr. Sutton will come back and let me be aware of what was discussed and the times and effort that have been put into helping your son, uh, and we will take it from there and
I was told by the principal already that that wouldn't be discussed at tomorrow's meeting.
Now, again, Mr. Sutton will be there and he will come back and update me on what steps have been taken or haven't been taken.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, uh. Rob, you feel like you're ready? Come up here and tell us some good news.
See the screen?
We, uh, had Rob to come in, uh, tonight, uh, normally at the noon meeting and, uh, so, uh, he's gonna try to give us, uh, some good thoughts and we know there's been some bad things that's taken part in the construction industry and always will, uh, but we'll take the good with the bad and move on.
It's, it's a, it's a messy process. Um, had that conversation today with another client, in fact. Um, but thank you for inviting me, uh, here tonight to make a, a brief presentation to you on the Central Harden project. Um, in, in many ways, it, this is, this is overdue, but, um, we felt like it was an important milestone. Even for your noon meetings, we, we talk openly a lot about the schedule and we have bar charts and things like that that we present. Uh, but I thought it might be nice to sort of, kinda refresh the project a little bit in your minds, um, show you why we're doing this and, and sort of the progress that's been made. And the summer's gonna be very active, so I wanted to sort of paint a picture of, you know, why we're doing what we're doing and where we're gonna be going, uh, in terms of activities, uh, through the summer. Um, so John, if you don't mind a scroll. Um, so there's a few things that we're trying to accomplish, um, you know, prior to the summer. So, um, the end of, of next month, there, we're doing some things to, um, enable a lot of work on the site. Um, and there's a new entrance that's coming in off of Ring Road. Um, one of the interesting features that we're putting into the project is, you know, one of your fueling stations for the district for your buses is at Central Harden. We're actually putting in another dispenser there, uh, at Central Harden to, to further enable the capacity to fuel buses. So there's a little bit of rework there at, at the fueling station. We're getting that accomplished, uh, the end of, of, of May as well. And again, the, the new entrance into the lot, um, that, again, it kind of enables us to, uh, go forward with a lot of site activities this summer. And again, that rendering that you see there that we, um, just went past is the, sort of the new entry into the athletic gym area of the building. So the, where the student parking lot is and will, will remain, this is sort of your approach into the building for, for those that haven't seen it. Um, so this is sort of a lot of what is happening on the site, um, this summer. Um, so there's a lot of grade work, storm work. Uh, I don't think Mr. Billings is here tonight. Um, but you can, you can thank him for a lot of this. Um, we're stripping the asphalt, uh, getting it ready to regrade in June. Uh, cutting it down to gray to make all the new stormwater work. Um, the new concrete at that fueling station will get poured. Um, there's, uh, I think I've expressed to the board before, there is a enormous amount of utility and infrastructure work that also has to be done to enable the project. Um, just where the building's positioned, a lot of things have to be moved. And so there's some demo and underground work, uh, for those. Uh, light poles and bases for the new lot will be set. Um, curb and gutter and concrete walks. So those that are familiar with Central Harden, you know, the big student lot doesn't have any islands or curbing in it. Um, the new design will all be curved. There'll be a way to actually organize the traffic flow in the parking lot where now it's, it's just sort of a sea of asphalt. So it'll be much improved, uh, when we're done. Um, in July, we're putting in a new student walkway that will enable the phases of the project uh, to continue and, and get them safely, uh, out of the existing building and, uh, to their cars and buses. Uh, we're actually gonna go ahead and get the asphalt base down. Uh, so there's a lot of grade work, stonework, um, and we're gonna put the base down, but we're not gonna put the top coat. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, obviously we, we wanna do that as late in the processes as we can. And of course, we're, we're constantly moving our construction fencing around, uh, to enable the phases. And, and just again, for, for those that haven't seen it, the rendering here is the new, uh, call it the front door. This is the new admin entry, visitor entry, main entry into the much improved Central Harden project. The library is the, um, the piece there to the left of that entry. And again, this is, you know, without zooming into the site plan, this is sort of, uh, just a little bit of the site. You can see some of the utility routes, um, that we're moving, the red ones are stormwater. Um, lot to pull away from the footprint of the building, uh, and put in. Um, and the images you see to the right, um, we do these things called mockups. And, um, we did one for Lincoln Trail and we did one for East Harden. Um, but for, for Central, there's enough project here. We actually, and enough detail in the design of the building. We, we made one that's more or less full scale of the project. So there, it's quite tall. It's, it's much enlarged. Uh, we will use that to pick out our exterior materials, but more importantly, we will also use it as a tool, uh, preemptive of the contractors actually working on the building proper to look at their techniques, their assemblies, you know, it, you know, are they, are they caulking the windows in properly? Things like that, we can evaluate on the mockup to be sure, certain that they're doing it correctly on the project. So those, those are the two pictures there on the right. And then, uh, some, some area A, so to refresh everybody's memory, we, we kinda carved the building into letters A through F. So there's sort of zones of the building. A starts back at the sort of the back corner of the existing gym. And you can kind of imagining wrapping around that side of the gym and in front of the building to where you get to area F, which is that new admin, uh, entry area. So area A is primarily the, the new auxiliary gym. Um, the good news is here, the masonry there is going up. Uh, we'll have, uh, bar joists and decking in on May. Um, the roofing system will actually start in late July. Um, the cold four metal framing that forms the penthouse just above the gym, uh, will pick up in August. Uh, the stone, once we get the walls erected and sort of the, the structure of the building in place, the stone and the veneer will, will come along. And then the MEP and the finishing will, will continue on from that point forward. The image on your right is that new, uh, main entry into the, uh, gym commons area, uh, connecting both the new, uh, auxiliary gym and the existing gym. So these are a few pictures of the progress. Um, the one that you can really start to see is the bottom right. You sort of see those three structural frames there. Those are the, the new window frame, structural frames, uh, for the windows that are in that gym. Um, but that, basically that box that you see there, uh, is, is the gymnasium. The picture to the left is that, um, it is that vestibule commons entry area that you see. So the bathrooms for that new athletic entry, uh, is just under, uh, Mr. Wright's cursor there. And then kind of carrying around into area B, which is primarily the media center, um, that work will commence. Uh, footings will go in in June. Uh, the plumbing, the rough end, the foundations, uh, start up in July. Uh, the sort of the lower level CMU will, will take us into September as well. Um, and the holocore planks will go into September. One of the, our pictures are about two weeks old. Um, so there's even been progress made on the structure of the building in area A. Some of those concrete planks have ac- actually started to be set now. So, you know, we're, we're bringing the structure up vertically, uh, in that particular area. And again, this sort of carries you around the building. So the picture on the left actually is the, the two doors you see there are the new ROTC classrooms on the lower level. Uh, those will take you in. And again, you sort of see the, how the building will wrap around on the picture on the right, coming from the back of the new auxiliary gym, kind of wrapping the gym and coming along the front. So area C, that is actually our, uh, existing gym, your existing gym. Uh, and we've already started the demolition in there. Um, the picture that you see is our, uh, latest rendering. We, we, our, we never, we hesitate to call our renderings final because we're always adjusting them. We've been working Mr. Isaacs to look at the graphics on the court and the colors and the staining of the floor and, uh, really working to, to get that just right. It's an, it's an important space. Uh, but demolition in there has started and, um, it will continue to be ongoing, uh, into the end of July. And again, you see a little bit of that progress. These are, these are pretty early, but you see the bleachers starting to come out. I think the ceiling will actually start to come out, uh, next week. Uh, that's a, that's a big milestone because that, um, I think you will be impressed at the volume of your space when the ceiling, because the ceiling's not going back, just so we're all clear. Uh, we're dressing that up, painting it out, new, new structure, uh, or, uh, new MEP, new duckwork, new lighting. Um, laying ceilings in gymnasiums like that are, are, are never a very good idea. So we, uh, we definitely wanted to improve that for you. And you see some of the locker rooms being renovated and, and the demo work going on. And then area E, again, we're, we're sort of heading back towards our, our new kit, kitchen cafeteria and admin area. Um, and the way the construction manager's actually tackling this, they're starting some of the area E and F work, uh, soon and kind of connecting the dots, coming from A to, to E and F and, and kind of connecting things through. Uh, but those footings and foundations, um, complete in mid-July. Again, sort of, once that's done, all the underground utilities, um, kind of come along for the ride as well. We have to coordinate all that. Um, all of our steel work, our structure, our beams and columns should be in by the end of September. Um, and then the, the, the social stair that you see kind of in the bottom, uh, image there, uh, back in the distance is the social stair that connects the two main levels, um, at the commons room. So that last one? Okay, great. Um, I'm happy to field any questions that the board might have. Um, and, uh, it's still an exciting project. I think it's always good to sort of reflect on the imagery and, you know, as I said, construction is messy. Right now, it's, it's probably a little hard to visualize, um, how much improved project will be when we're all said and done. Uh, but it's gonna be a very active summer. That much, that much we know.
Alright, no sixteen-inch steps in the gym this time, okay?
No, and, and in fact, Ms. Morgan, I will give her credit, um, on multiple occasions has mentioned that little offset between your upper deck and your lower deck. And we have, we actually have a special detail on the drawing set that shows exactly how that should be done and transferred from the upper deck to the lower deck with, without a sixteen-inch drop.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause that's a little frightening.
Cause if you, if an old person like me makes that first step, you pretty much got it made to the bottom, you know?
Yeah, new gates, new railings. Yeah, the, the gym really will be spectacular. I mean, it, it's, locker rooms will be completely redone. The gym will be completely redone. It'll look like a brand-new building when it, when it's done. And it's spectacular space already, just given its size and scale. I think you're, we just have to wait for it. And, uh, so I, I, I appreciate the board's patience to get through the project. I think that's always important as well. It, um, it takes time and, uh, appreciate, appreciate everyone's patience, the students. Uh, Mr. Isaacs has been great, uh, to work with and has been very understanding. We've asked him to do things that he does not feel comfortable doing, but he understands that it's to the benefit of the project and, and the kids that'll enjoy that, that building and facility when it's done.
I, I have a quick question about the size of that gym. We've, we've learned recently, looking for other facilities, that, uh, it's actually a pretty spacious gym. Is that?
It, it is. And that was one of the, the reasons we wanted to keep it and, and sort of invest in it. Because if, if you were to build Central Harden today under that, I think we've had this conversation before about the, the KDE model program. That is the, the guideline of how big is big? How big is a eight, eighteen-hundred-student gymnasium? Um, it's quite a bit smaller than Central Harden's gym. Um, and so it just does not make sense. It's actually closer to the size of what the auxiliary gym is versus, uh, the main gym. So,
Lucky to have gotten that built before that standard existed, I suppose.
It, 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 well, yes. I mean, that's, that's a nice way of putting it. And, and there, you know, there are some benefits to it being, having that age. Because again, if you were to build a brand-new school, um, you would, you would have to arm wrestle, um, with KD. Well, I mean, you used to have to arm wrestle with KD.
Yeah.
Um, so you, you have, yeah, so you have that on your agenda as well. So I'm, I'm gonna hang around in case there's questions on that as well. Um, but, um, but yes, no, I think, uh, again, it will be spectacular space. It will, it will be the envy of many, many districts when it's done.
So as large as that is, it was, um, it, it's barely enough for our, you know, for the things we try to do in there right now.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'm just, that's, I'm setting that up for the talk about, we'll be able to maybe not have to arm wrestle with KD after this.
And that's true of the entire model, you know, so education's changed, right? I mean, um, I guess that, the model program came in, what, ninety-four-ish or so? And, and really has not been changed since. Um, so things like, uh, the, the cafeteria, or the, um, the, the one I can point to. So Lincoln Trail Elementary, um, is actually upsized compared to the gymnasium compared to the model program because the problem is for, for six hundred kids, you can't pull the bleachers out and not overlap the floor. It, it's just a fact. Space will not, a, a court is a certain shape and size. And for six hundred kids, for the size that you're given, there's no way to play a game in an elementary school and have the bleachers out. It, it just will not work. So at Lincoln Trail, that gym is actually larger by a factor of the bleacher extension so that we can pull the bleachers out and not overlap the floor.
But we required special permission to do that?
We use some of our locally identified space allocation to, to pull it. So there, there's, there is a chunk of space in the model program that we can kind of use as needed as the board directs us to. Um, and that's what we did in Lincoln Trail's case. E, east is the same way. That, those bleachers do not overlap that court. It just, it, I mean, makes sense, right? I mean, it's
And with the bleachers overlapping the court, you can't
So it's, it's little things like that that I think ultimately when we get through this, this, um, this period, uh, that, that we're about to go through with KD facilities, that hopefully my, my hope is we have a much improved, uh, regulation and model program for, for all districts. That's my hope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We, uh, had the, uh, construction manager, uh, for the general public's information, uh, at our noon meeting and, uh, due to the weather and, uh, changing conditions, we're pretty much And due to the weather and the changing conditions, we're pretty much on schedule. The geothermal drillers got way behind. They have been told to leave the job. And we will be starting with a new group in June. So I guess we were lucky to get a new group in in June. So the geothermal wells are definitely a sore topic with us right now, but we have addressed the issue. People that were originally doing it are gone and we'll be moving forward. That's the way we intend to do things. We stressed that point when we started this project. And we're going to stick to it the best we can. So unfortunately, we just didn't have the right people there. All right. Consideration of the consent agenda. Anyone have anything that they want to talk about? We're approving a modified schedule for a student with a disability. We're approving EC3 culinary team to travel to Washington, DC by commercial carrier. They've received some honors. And I think that this is well worth the trip for them to go to DC. We're going to approve Central Harden High School seniors and families to go to Broadbent Arena. And that's where their graduation will be, May the 30th. That's a sore subject with gyms, because we don't have a gym now. So we chose to go there and and the school polled the students. And I think that's just the best thing that could happen in this situation. Where we're, we have no parking, we have an end out of a gym, and we knew that sometime this was going to happen. So hopefully, everybody can accept that for a year or so here and move on. We had the financial reports, orders of treasure, school activity fund balances. We're approving the capital fund request for insurance, technology upgrades, repairs, asphalt, and bus purchases. And a few change orders at East Harden that were coming in. Some of them credits, some of them debits, both ways. And we also have a change order already at Central Harden. Anytime you're digging in parking lots and so forth, we're finding things that we had no idea was there. So we, we'll have a few more of the change orders, no doubt. We're approving a lease agreement with the city of West Point in the Harden County Board of Education for the West Point School Building. After last year, we acquired the West Point School District into our system. And we have that building, so the city has need for it, and we're going to lease it to them. I would think until at least debts are paid off on it, that you've accepted when we took it in. So that's, that's a great move for us and hopefully a great move for the city of West Point. We're going to approval of a public hearing officer's report on the district facility planned amendment. And we have a student accident insurance bid that we're going to accept tonight, unless something gets pulled out. We'll have a surplus property auction on Thursday, June 16th, with a rain date of June 17th. That'll be out at our building and ground center. We always accumulate some desk and unused or no need for basketball goals and many different items like that that gets accumulated on school properties and school grounds. So usually, once a year, we have an auction and just sell those things. That's pretty much what took place today at the meeting that we discussed some of those items. And anyone have anything they want to talk about or pull out or, or brag on anymore? We good?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. And we go down to action items. Approval of a resolution to elect, to conduct our facilities-related projects and affairs under the provision of House Bill 678 enacted during the 2022 regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly. So we, we've got some new things happening. And I think we probably don't have a lot of choice but to accept this. It's going into law.
I think as we were, the legislation requires that we adopt a, a, a resolution to operate under that bill for the next two years. And it basically eliminates all that red tape that we've had to jump through and deal with in the past. I think we should go, we have projects planned for the next two years.
Can't just wait.
And I think we should, we should go ahead. And I would move that we, we approve.
Let me, let me read the resolution.
Yes.
And then I have a resolution.
You have one written up, do you?
Whereas on April 8th, 2022, Governor Andy Beshear signed 2022 Regular House, Regular Session House Bill 678, hereafter House Bill 678, into law, making it effective immediately at that time pursuant to the emergency clause in Section 8 of the bill. And whereas House Bill 678 provides great flexibilities to local boards of education relating to the funding, financing, design, construction, renovation, or modification of the district's facilities and other facilities-related matters, notwithstanding certain requirements for obtaining the prior approval of the Kentucky Department of Education or the Kentucky Board of Education as stated in various statutes and administrative regulations. And whereas provisions of House Bill 678 generally apply from April 8th, 2022, until June 30th, 2024, and will apply retroactively to submissions and requests that have been made by local boards prior to the effective date of the act but that have not yet received approval from the appropriate board or official. And whereas House Bill 678 requires a local board that elects to conduct its projects under the provisions of the bill to adopt a resolution by majority vote and submit the resolution to the Kentucky Department of Education as notice. Based on the resolution, I move that the Harden County Board of Education elect to conduct its projects under the provisions of House Bill 678 and submit this resolution to the Kentucky Department of Education as notice of this action.
I'll second. Okay. Yes, and I also agree. I think this is a, a good deal. We, we have had a lot of problems. We, this gentleman right here getting projects and robbed through KD. They got backlogged. And I mean, you know, they're, they're not turning us loose, but they're at least saying, go ahead and get your projects, I think. And we haven't hidden anything from them. We haven't asked for anything that wasn't right. And we're still not going to do that. But it's just not waiting for months for them to approve something that we've decided we need to do. So it'll be a great move. It was maybe one of the better school legislation pieces that passed this year.
I, I just want to comment that I, I know, I'm surprised at how ratchet this feels trying to get things through KD. It feels like we, we go uphill and then we stop. And we go uphill and then we stop. Waiting on things like whether they will approve us to continue to use a hallway that we can't take apart. So, I mean, that one cost us a month and a half. They're going to say yes. They're not going to say, well, you just can't use that hallway. So, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense. We shouldn't have to do that so often. And I'm hoping that even, that, that, that goes away even after, when they get to the new model program, we still don't have to do that.
Again, I, I think this two-year period, there's going to be a lot of.
Rob, they want you to come to the mic.
Gina's back there.
So I, I've, like many of the superintendents, you may or may not know that I'm actually president of the AIA in Kentucky this year as well. So I.
What's the AIA?
American Institute of Architects. So it's, it's our professional organization. And Eric Steva, that's in my office, that's also worked for you a little bit behind the scenes, is, is our legislative liaison. So I think the word triangulation was brought up tonight. We, we've, we've been active also in, you know, working on this to the benefit of not just Harden County, but many, many districts across the state. What you've encountered is emblematic of, of just about every other district we're, we're working with. I think it's going to be a good thing. I think this two-year period will be used to, again, kind of re-craft, reevaluate the, the regulations and, and give us, I think it was June of, of '24, I think is our, our target date. So my hope is that we'll all have a good foundation in June of '24 on how to better serve the Commonwealth and, and have KD. I mean, we need, we need somebody in Frankfurt as a partner, right? We, we want it to be the right kind of partnership with less red tape and more of a support role, if you would, for, for districts across the state.
I appreciate you speaking in support of that and working to make this happen. I just wanted to talk about it a bit because I got some feedback and saw some comments about how it looked like local districts were trying to do an end run around state control and do things that, that were shoddy or bad or hide things. And I just wanted to talk about why this needed to happen the way it did.
And, and there are other districts that have what I would only describe as kind of the, the nightmare scenario that, you know, ended up impacting them financially in budgets, bonding capacity. You know, six months on a project can make or break you. And, and there are districts out there that, that suffered through that. And, and again, I think that was really the, the initiation of, of the legislation that was passed is just to not let that happen. And again, I think I'm a licensed professional. I have colleagues and competitors that are also licensed professional. We, we have a, we have an obligation. Nobody, nobody is doing this with malice. Nobody's out there trying, as you said, it, it's all for the betterment of, of building good schools for our, our children. Because educational models have changed. And, and, you know, that's part of it, too, that the, the regulation just has not kept up over time. We're doing Fayette County's new middle school. And again, they, they, they took some of that space allocation that I mentioned earlier. And, and we're putting in, you know, dedicated mental health suites into that middle school because it's, it's at the, at, at the, at the top of the list now for, for students and their needs. So again, it's things like that that I think, and hopefully in these two years, we're all work together in partnership and craft something that's much better.
Okay.
Pass, that's the end of the discussion.
Yep, we, we need to vote on it. Any other discussion? All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, new business. Anyone have any new business? We had a brief discussion today about maybe seeking quotes on different things, whether it be construction, architects, insurance. We thinking about seriously having a, maybe a rotational program to where that we would take a look at these things every four years or so to see, make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck in, in whatever field it is. So that's something we're, we're working on. And just throw it out there for what it's worth. I think, you know, we're going, we talked about a rotational period where we might have proposals or just, we want to stay in line, but we want the best of what we get. So we're looking out for the best bang for the buck for the taxpayer and the best interest for the student, most of all. Superintendent's report.
Should be short if we want to get out of here.
All right.
No, I just want to share that Greg spoke of the work ethic certification. Those will be going on at our elementary, middle, and high schools. We quickly realized you can't wait until they're a senior in high school to start talking to them about their careers and how to conduct themselves in an interview and how to conduct themselves on social media before they become seniors in high school. So not only are we doing the interviews, but there is a lot of training and teaching that is happening up to that point with our work ethic standards. So I'm just really impressed with our instructional services department. They have developed these of what will happen at kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way up, so that when our students are leaving fifth grade, they know about all eight work ethic standards. They will receive an interview. They will be given feedback on how well they do in that interview. We will then do that again. Again, we will continue teaching in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In eighth grade, they will have another interview. That one will, they will have to share information about what they plan to do when they get to high school. They will have to look somebody in the eye. So all of the businesses around here are like, we'll train them if you send them to us showing up, showing up drug-free, showing up ready and able to work with other colleagues. So this is something we are really proud of. You culminate that with our seniors in high school. They earn a work ethic certification cord. So when you notice our graduations with the blue and green cords, that is to say that they earn their work ethic certification as a senior in high school. They are then guaranteed an interview with our partners in the community. Next Thursday, we have a job fair. We have multiple companies coming in. And our students in high school can select to go to this as seniors and give them a resume, shake their hand, look them in the eye. And they will by then, that time, know what they're interested in because they've done all of this work through elementary, middle, and high school. So we really appreciate the partners that are making that career a success. Also want to bring up that we have invited other school districts to participate in that. And we look forward to greater partnerships with that. And finally, on our website, you have heard our legislators last year passed House Bill 563, which opened borders. What that means is that parents can apply for their students to go to different school districts across the state. And a district has the opportunity to allow those students to come into their district. And that means that someone from Bullock County could come to Harden County. It means that a student from LaRue County could come to Harden County. So it truly is open borders. It is through a process that is open on our website for anyone interested in coming to Harden County. I think you'll find that very friendly at this point, that you don't have to do additional steps. And if you are not strong in technology and you want to stop here by the Board of Education to pick up an application, you can certainly do so. So, but I agree with what Chairman Wise said. There are lots of great things happening in Harden County schools. And this is the time of year you start to see all those culminate into these final activities.
Just like a big flower blooming, you know?
It is.
It is, it's wonderful. I mean, people's asking, you know, why, why do you even want food with serving on the board? They don't understand what you see the growth at the end of the year. It's wonderful. All right, I don't think we need an executive session tonight. Board calendar, May the 3rd, May the 5th, we're going to have a retirement dinner. One of those are for 19 and 20 retirees. We felt like they got cheated a little bit in the COVID situation. So we're going to back up and at least have a, a dinner for them.
And 2021.
Yes, and 2021, 21, 22, yeah. 19, 20, 20, gosh, time is long, right? All right. So, and then May the 19th, we will have our noon board meeting at College View and be back here at Performing Arts Center at the PAC for our regular monthly board meeting. So Harden County High graduation, May the 21st and the 23rd will be Project Search graduation, EC3. May the 26th, last day for the students. And May the 27th, 7:30, North Harden graduation. May the 28th, John Harden. And Memorial Day, May the 30th will be Central Harden. And with that, we have completed another board meeting.
Move for adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Thank you all for coming out tonight and sitting through this long, lengthy meeting with us. We appreciate your time and.